I am HO Talk Show.
Ah, to the ISM H, to the Izzo Talk Show.
That's right.
That's right.
Are you had lost the words, Charles?
I have lost the words. I have lost my word because I told you it's like, it's like, it's almost like an overwhelming event. It's like overwhelming occasion because I don't take for granted when these lights come on.
Right.
You know, like when the meters start pegging and the light and the red light starts flashing and Kenesha over there counting down. And then Max staring at me. And then I have like, just like so much intellectual elegance sitting in between us.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's like, it's like you gotta come correct.
That's right.
But don't come at all, as they say. And so that's why, um, you know, I'm super excited right about now. And as you said, Max, today's show just kind of organically come together. And I think those are the best ones, wouldn't you say?
Mm hmm.
You know, uh, cause there's so much going on in society, in the world. Uh, politicians crazy as ever. Uh, and, uh, locally, uh, even, you know, we had a midterm that was a big. And some, and some of the history that was made is we are joined by none other than the youngest ever elected to the Charlottesville School Board.
Boo, yes.
None other than, uh, Zionna Bryant. Without further ado, what's up, Zion?
Good afternoon. I was about to say good morning. So thank you for having me. I'm so excited to join y'all today. I am just really humbled and honored to be elected, to be the youngest person elected to the Charlottesville School Board. I mean, that's one thing, but it's another thing to just know that like, it was a people powered campaign. And like, I don't say that on a cliche level, like we had so much community involvement from start to finish announced March 1, um, this of this year and now finishing on November 4th. It was a long journey and people are asking like, how do you feel? And I was like, for the first time ever, I was drinking like energy drinks, coffee every day. And I'm just like trying to keep the momentum up. And so, yeah, people are like, are you on a high from the election win? And not necessarily, I'm on a high from engaging with people, showing up to things, meeting new folks and coming up with new ideas. And I hope that that continues to last into my transition onto the board. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Can I just tell you that one of the things that is pretty apparent, um, in meeting with you today is that you seem really grounded. And I wonder, how do you feel? Because, you know, you didn't come in bouncing off the walls like yay, woo hoo, I won. You seem really grounded and, uh, just kind of solid, you know, um, solid presence in terms of what just happened and what you will be stepping into your new role.
Yeah. I mean, bouncing off the walls, maybe internally. But, I mean, I'm, I'm growing up. Like, I think like, that's, a lot of people have watched my journey from middle school to now the grad student. Like, it's, it's been a long journey. I've learned a lot. I've, you know, encountered some interesting things and learned some good lessons and also just got, I've gotten some really good wisdom from a lot of people in the community and particularly over these past, I would say like these past three months.
Okay.
Um, I feel like the summer was like my divider, like, so I started in the spring and then the summer came and it's like downtime. There's no school board meetings, things like that. Um, but then we came out of the summer and it was like, it's go time. Like August, everyone's like, August is when the yard signs start appearing and all the things. And so I felt like August was going to be my main time to like be active in this election and with campaigning. So I feel like, yeah, it was a long, it was a long process, but even from August to now, I would say the biggest thing that I did was, I came up with strategy. Like I was very strategic with how I was going to find as many people as possible to even want to listen to me or talk to me and hear my ideas and share theirs. And I mean, I've had a few people talk to me, like, you know, journalists, reporters, um, people who run campaigns for a living, who've said things like, this is an impressive school board campaign. I don't think I've seen one like it. And that's not to brag or say like, oh, we ran the best campaign ever. But it's to say that like, I was very strategic with the fact that I wanted it to be grassroots from start to finish. And so I stayed grounded in my community because that's always been the central point of my work. Like if you listen to the school board candidate forum, we had community partnerships was one point that I wanted to hit home. So I feel like there were so many community comments and that was like a thread throughout my entire campaign. So I'm grounded because I'm like, you know, we're still showing up even after winning. Like we had a school board meeting two days later and I was there attending, like giving public comment, being active and engaged. So I think it's not different in the way that I haven't done community engagement or I haven't been active and involved. It's different in the seat that I'll be sitting in, in the room, but I'll still be going to the same rooms that I've been going to and some new ones, right? Like, of course, some, some backdoor conversations will happen, um, just because that's what boards do. But ultimately I'm really excited to just like, keep going. And so many people, I've met so many young people who are also inspired and I'm just like, excited to be able to be their voice at the table too, because that was like my number one point. It's fostering community and amplifying student voice. And that's what I hope to do.
I love it.
Let me ask you this question because to your point, it did feel sometimes more like a political campaign or like, almost like city office or like even something higher than that. And like, that stood out to me. It like, was that sort of the intent? Because it felt very serious. And I, and I say that coming from the perspective of a lot of times you look at things like school board or whatnot. People kind of see it as, oh, you know, it's just like, just like a little volunteer thing. If I get it, I get it. If I don't, I don't. Like, but I think that kind of speaks volumes to how serious that you took it. You know what I mean? And you don't always see that in, um, elections such as for school board. So was that intentional to make it feel like, oh, this is serious, you know?
For sure. Because I think that.
You don't play?
I think that the, um, the way that you lead a campaign, the way that you show that you are investing on the early side of it, like that's going to be the reflection of the dedication you're going to give when you're in office. So I wanted everyone to know that like, no, I'm very serious about this. Like you said, I don't play. And, um, in this moment, public education is a hot topic. Like there are attacks on public education. And so it was important for me to make that clear. This isn't just a volunteer position, you know, those are, you have to get elected to be on the school board in Virginia. You have to go on the ballot. You have to collect signatures to get on the ballot and then you have to get the votes. So it is a long process for those candidates who are running. It's a very serious job because anytime any article comes out about the schools or, you know, new data comes out, those elected officials are going to feel that because they get all the feedback and they get all the yelling and all the things. So it is definitely a serious office. Um, but for me, it was also like, my family's legacy with educational advocacy is so like, it's so solid and it's so important to me. It's a personal thing. So knowing that like two of my great uncles helped integrate schools here in Charlottesville. My great grandmother was a NAACP president. Um, like there are so many kind of common threads for me that bring me to this moment. And so I would expect that they would want me to take it seriously too. And they would expect me to bring the same level of, um, energy and, um, you know, just like crossing my Ts and dotting my Is that I bring to everything else. So I had to have that same energy. And so I'm, yeah, I wanted it to be thorough from start to finish. And I had a lot of support. Like I keep saying, I can't, I couldn't have done it by myself. There were so many people behind the scenes, family, mom, grandma, sisters who are showing up to help me, uh, my partner, like so many just people who were like solid for me and who were like my rock. And so I'm grateful for them. Yeah.
So really quickly, Charles, um, tell us how mom, grandma and sisters are feeling about your win.
Uh, I think they're really proud. Like my sister, she, I have one sister who she says, oh, the interesting things. And she was like, um, no, like people need to clock it. Like I was so interested, like they need to clock it.
You gotta forget down for the old people.
Okay, clock it. Like you need to, you need to recognize, you need to understand that this is the moment, like you did your thing. And so I appreciate that. I have two younger sisters who like, they really hold me down. That is, that is always key. We are sisters and my mom raised us to be super close and we have the same initials. So with that being said, it's like, it's written from the beginning. Uh, my grandmother, she knocked doors for Kamala Harris.
Over the moon, I'm sure.
She knocked doors for me. She knocks doors for anybody who she believes in and who she wants to win. And so she's always been doing that. She had me phone banking for Obama in 2008, 2007, right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm grateful for her support. And then my mom is just like, my mom's more of the like background silent helper. She doesn't always talk out front and stuff, but she's always going to make sure things get done the way they need to. Things get to where they need to go. And she's always a person who's thinking about the details. So without my grandma, my mom, my sisters, I know I couldn't have done it. And I, it was so special for Kamala Harris to shout my nana out because she did put the work in for Kamala. Like we were at brunch the day that it was announced that Kamala would be, um, you know, the, the candidate for the Democrat Party. And she was like, oh, we kind of start calling people. She started calling people at brunch, y'all. Like we were sitting there and she called like three people like, did y'all hear? And I was like, oh my goodness. And from that point on, she just kept going. So like, that's the energy. Yeah, that's the energy that like I have in my family. So it's, it's natural.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We are speaking to none other than, uh, Mrs. Iona Bryant, newly elected to the City of Charlottesville School Board. Um, Zion, let's dig deeper into your mindset going into this duty. Um, because you've worn, you've worn a lot of hats, you know, of like over your young life. And, you know, like, so you have, you know, such an upward trajectory, right? Because you just getting started, right? It feels like, like still young. And so how do you compartmentalize though? You know, being the community organizer, being an activist, um, now public office, you know what I mean? Um, to make sure that, that you're working to the best of your ability in those multitudes of spaces. You know what I mean? Because, you know, I have to imagine that in, in some spaces, people are looking at you, they're leaning on you. They're like, you're the leader.
The great hope.
We don't know what to do unless you give marching orders. But in this space, there may need to be more collaboration. There may need to be some more give, right? You know, give and take. Uh, so what's your mindset going into this position?
Well, I'd, I'd challenge you to think a little bit more about why it has to be different. Um, like I would ask that question mainly because I don't think that it's necessarily there needs to be more give or more collaboration because I am a community collaborator. Um, so that's something that I've been doing. I do think that people sometimes don't want to have difficult conversations. And that's why it can seem like, you know, we're not collaborating as much because some people retreat and others walk towards it. And I'm one of those people who walk towards it. Um, I think it will be an interesting mix of personalities on the board. I already perceived that just from attending and being active and like meetings and things like that. However, I was intentional coming into this entire like process to try to get meetings with some of the board members I have met with Ms. Dooley, who's the current chair. I've met with Ms. Byrne. She's the, the vice chair. Um, and so still having those meetings, still I've talked with, uh, Ms. Cooper. Like I'm, I'm having those meetings and those conversations, um, to try my best to like, understand their perspectives and see how we can best collaborate once I'm on the board. Um, but also like, I will say that there are some board members who have been super active in the community and I appreciate their work. Um, I always see Ms. Cooper out. I always see Ms. Burns out. And so like naturally I've collaborated with them for a long time. Like, um, so I look forward to being able to expand that. I look forward to being on the board and learning new information to better inform my opinions. Um, because right now, you know, as private citizens, we just go to the board meetings. We can read the agendas. We can be active in other circles and spaces, but we don't have all of the information that board members have. So I do imagine that that will alter some of the ways that I think about certain things. And I look forward to that. Like that's, you know, that's the good part about it. You're always learning. You're always being enlightened on new things. Um, but no, absolutely. I look forward to collaborating with each of them. I do think that we have a lot of strong suits on the board. Mr. Meyer is like, you know, all about infrastructure and, and buildings and the budget and things like that. Ms. Torres is looking at early education, early learning. Um, and she's really focused on that. And so I feel like there, those are just two examples of other people who I'm interested in collaborating with.
Got you, got you, got you. Um, one thing that comes to mind, Max, is to piggyback off that because I don't know if you're taking another direction. But, um, like we all know that sometimes we're in spaces and sometimes we're the only black person in the space. Or may, may, you know, and you all, this is maybe the only black female of the case. And so when you are looked at as sort of a representation or mouthpiece, say, whether it's been for teenagers or whether it's been for black women or whatnot, um, I think we all have been in those spaces to where we gotta find, define balances, right? And we gotta find like the medians, um, especially within public education, you know, to kind of bring my point home to you to get your feedback on is because we're already seeing that a lot. Of course, I, you know, we want to get into what you think are the major um, issues that needs to be addressed in our city schools. But when we look at public schools, you know, the term public is the key word, right? And so you're going to have some rich white families that have, that feel like that the, the school environment should be a certain way. You're going to have middle class, you're going to have poor families, um, poor black families. And so like, that's a pretty interesting ratio, you know, if you go from whether it's poor, white and, and rich, black or whatever the case is. And somehow we have to find unison to do what's best for the whole.
Absolutely.
And that's easier said than done. So I'm curious on your thoughts, you know, like when you're in those school board meetings and they yelling at you and calling you out your name, how you gonna respond, Zion?
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna respond in the most respectful way I can, right? Because at the end of the day, I mean, I was elected, so I do have a responsibility to hear everyone's opinions and voices. And like, that is different, you know, that is going to be a new thing that I've been doing. I've been hearing different opinions, but hasn't always been forced or like required. So that I look forward to, to engaging with different people. But even, you know, something interesting, even during early voting, I've met some of those parents who were like, I contemplated putting my kids into private schools because I don't like the direction of the schools right now. And we're having those conversations. They're like, why do you feel the way you do about SROs? Or can you tell me why you want to champion black students so much? What about white students? Like I had those conversations in person with voters right before they went in to cast their ballots. Like that's the, the positive or like the advantage of showing up to early voting every day, which I did for the entire early voting period. Starting September 19th, all the way until November 1st, like that I was there every day showing up. Whether it was one hour, three hours, five hours, I was talking with people. And anytime someone wanted to come up to me and ask me a question, I was willing to engage and respond. So I absolutely have said from the beginning, I'm there to represent every single student and to listen to every single perspective. And whether I disagree or I agree with them is one thing, but that doesn't, that will not alter my ability to want to still make a decision that will benefit everyone. Um, and as I've said before, I do believe that when we work to support the students who are furthest in the margins of families who are the most under-resourced, we allow the entire community to benefit. Because think about it, right? If we're saying that students who are not able to read on grade level, um, if there's correlation to other issues in the division, how would not focusing on literacy not benefit everyone, right? Or if we're saying that there are families who are not showing up who need more support and we're saying, how can we get them vouchers for food or clothing or things like that to help them with their basic needs? How will that not benefit everyone? We think about crime. We think about all of these issues, these big issues in the community that have plagued Charlottesville for a long time. A lot of those things start with human needs. Like what are the basic essential needs that people need to have met? And what can the schools do to be a partner in that? And also city council has to step up, community partners, community organizations. But I believe that when we invest well in the community and, and into families, they will bring that positivity and those good outcomes into the schools. They'll be prepared to learn. Students will be prepared to learn. They'll be fed at home. They'll be in bed on time. They'll have the support from their parents to do the educational things they need to do. I think that all of those things are key. Because sometimes when we get into these conversations about literacy or attendance, chronic absenteeism, there's this tendency to blame parents. But what we're not thinking about is the fact that a lot of these black parents that we are blaming also went through Charlottesville City Schools and were victims of the same issues that we had. The achievement gap was a problem when they were in school. So how are we thinking about these issues in a generational lens and thinking about how we can approach them? Because if mom or dad didn't get a great education in Charlottesville City Schools and then they have kids and they're raising their children, how, I mean, what are we expecting to happen? There has to be an intervention somewhere. And I think that's where community partners and, you know, a good community lens, a community based vision comes into play.
You know, that of course makes, um, perfect sense to all of us, you know? But I realize that there will be, I'm sure you do too, some individuals who hear that and they are still hearing that you, your priority will be working on behalf of the black community or poor community. Um, and so let's, let's kind of peel it back to actually our community specifically. I realize that a lot of people who support you and who have voted for you from the black community are looking at you as the great hope. And that's not to take away from anyone who, um, any black person that's currently serving on the school board or has in the past, but they are looking for it to you to change things for their family. You know, their kids are getting lost in the cracks. They don't necessarily know how to fix it and may, may not necessarily be interested in trying to fix it. Nonetheless, they are putting their trust in you to go into that space and fix it for their family. Um, and so I guess my, my question here, what I want to hear comments on is, is how you plan to be able to work in, in both spaces where you are making decisions on the, for the betterment of the entire school body and where you are also prioritizing the, the black community or low income community specifically.
Well, I would invite people to revisit the strategic plan and the stated core mission and values of Charlottesville City Schools. Equity is at the center. So if we think about what equity means and we break that down, then that does look like, um, continuing to think about and keep in mind the students who are furthest in the margins while also keeping in mind the students who have the most resources, um, and finding that balance. That's what equity is all about. Um, I am a no one's, uh, what's the word? I'm no one's solution alone, right? Like in order to find.
That's good.
Policies, um, and to find solutions that will work for everyone, it will take, well, let's be clear. To make anything happen on a school board, you need, or in Charlottesville school board, you need four votes. So that's even to get something to be looked into, to get a motion, like you, you, to have a vote to even start a process requires four votes. So to the people who are looking at me like, well, what will you do? I will be one vote, right? But you're still going to need three more. And so I think it's important for people to show up to the school board meetings, engage with school board members, not just me, but all of us. Um, because all of us have a vote and all of us have a role. And there may be, I, I do feel like everyone on any board brings their own strengths to the table. And so there are some people who are really, um, well researched and well read and have a lot of experience in a certain area that I may not, but we will work together. And so I think that that is why it's so important to show up to the school board meetings, write the emails, make the phone calls, um, meet with your school board members, meet with your city counselors, meet with your admin, administrative folks at the school level of each school, wherever your child is attending, or if you don't have children, just be a partner. Um, I think that's key. Uh, I, I do know that there are high expectations for me. I wouldn't sit here and act like I don't know that. Um, but I don't think that's any different from any other moment that I've been through. I don't think that the pressure and the high expectations are new to me. They're not new to any young black woman who runs for office. And luckily we do have some really strong leaders on the board currently who I feel like are interested in hearing from the community more. And in fact, they're, they want to hear um, from those parents who, whose students have been slipping through the cracks and who feel like they need more support. The board needs to hear your voice. Like write an email, you know, show up to the school board meetings. Or if you see them in public at a, you know, public event or some sort of public meeting, like maybe approach. Like you don't have to accost them. You don't have to like, be aggressive or, you know, anything like that. But you can definitely invite them to have conversation. I feel like more often than not, they are open minded and open to having conversation. Um, I'm going to do my best, period. That's what I've been doing. And I feel like, again, that was reflected in the campaign. That was reflected in the care that I've put into schools before. I mean, I let a walkout when I was in Charlottesville City Schools, um, calling for reform around SROs, calling for reform around, um, how students were being enrolled in certain classes. Not enough black students were in honors AP courses, in my opinion, just from my seat in the room, like being there. Um, so we, I did those things with the Black Student Union. I advocated for those things. I did the research regarding those things when I was at UVA. Um, and so I feel like I'm prepared to be able to be at least in the room and on the board to have the conversations and I will just do my best. Um, but yeah, that's all, that's all I feel like I can offer at this moment. It's, it's really going to be a steep learning curve for anyone who's new to coming onto an elected body. So I look forward to leaning in and learning more.
Yeah. So let's, let's provide some clarity to the listeners around some of the sort of socio terminology that we use. Because like we were throwing out terms such as poor or whether black or white, rich or whatever the case is. Because we realized that we're talking about public schools and, and like all of those feeder patterns and maybe from different neighborhoods or what cases, different, different socioeconomic. Let's not forget too, that we're seeing an influx in our community in, um, Afghan immigrants as well, right? Who speak yet another language, you know, other than like English or Spanish, what have you. So, um, it, it has, has there, like what, what can you tell us about community partnerships, even to bring, uh, support mechanisms in the fold? Like for that, for that population as well. And, you know, because I want to point that out because a lot of times, like we have this tendency to think, oh, it's poor black people that need all this help. You know what I mean? Like, but we have black people that's in every socioeconomic status.
Absolutely.
Um, and so like I said, so, you know, so I don't want to forget that we have Latinos and we have Afghans and folks like that who are also in, in different strats. So I'm curious on, on any insight onto those marginalized groups.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, when I say the students who are furthest in the margins, I'm not just talking about black students. And I'm very strategic with, um, and intentional with my language around that because I understand that. Um, and you know, we have the IRC, we have, um, like groups like Cristian Tojuntos. Um, there are groups that are doing that work to make sure that those groups are getting some support. And so I think the school can continue to be in close partnership with those groups too. Because it is unfortunately hard to reach every single part of the community and that goes for every racial group, every ethnic group. Um, but by investing in those community partnerships, I think we will do better and we'll see better outcomes. And so, uh, Charlottesville City Schools recently got a grant for like school communities or community schools grant. Um, and so that's going to be interesting to see how it is structured and to see how it works in the school division. Um, I do think that City of Promise is like kind of a smaller, um, example of how that can work. Well, we can look outside of Charlottesville. We can look at the Harlem Children's Zone, which, which City of Promise is modeled after. Um, and we can see how those kinds of, um, community partnership based organizations actually do help students succeed in school and help parents with assisting in their educational journeys as well. So, um, absolutely, all of the voices need to be at the table. All of the ethnic groups and communities should be thought of and present in the room. And that is why I think the school division is doing more to do that community outreach and I hope to be a part of that.
And, and we are kind of centering this part of the conversation around economic, not economic, educational or, um, academic is the word I'm looking for advancement. But I've had, um, I guess about three years of experience of having kids in city schools. Um, and I wonder whether or not you have any thoughts on, uh, how to bring the student body itself more, create some, um, coalesce or, um, collection, you know, collected body, um, when it comes to the student body itself. And I say that because when my kids got into the high school, it was kind of like, okay, these are like different worlds here. Like y'all don't engage with them and, you know, and whether you divide that by race or ethnicity or you divided by socioeconomic status or you whatever, it's like, like y'all don't, so you don't engage with them like all day, every day? Like y'all don't talk to each other at all? Like, what, like, okay, we need to fix that.
That was how you really feel, Ms. Max?
I mean, that's real. Unfortunately, that was my experience too, being in the honors AP course track. We, the lunches are structured around what classes you have at what time. So that does matter. Like all of the ways that the flow of the hallways, which hallways you even visit, that matters based on what courses you're enrolled in. Which is why I was so passionate about that when I was in high school to make sure that more black students were getting into the honors AP courses. Because it's true, there were some friends that I had that were not in those courses that I did not see them at all. Every single day I saw them outside of school only, maybe in the morning when we got off the bus or we entered and when we left for the day. So that is very real. But again, that's by design. Um, Charlottesville High School, to be quite candid, has always been a tale of two high schools, in my opinion. I've experienced that, um, being the student who was in again, those higher level courses and then being a part of student council and National Honor Society and all of those things. Like student, uh, being a part of youth council appointed by city council, like I saw very, I saw the same students all day, every day and every capacity. Um, and so there's like, I mean, we, we were friends, right? We were cool. But at the same time, I do wish to see, um, more of that kind of like, more of that diversity on every level within CHS. And I will say that it's gotten a little bit better since I've been at Charlottesville High School. Um, I saw, I went to a theater performance on Friday and that is the most diverse I've ever seen the theater department at Charlottesville High School. So I'm, I'm excited to see the progress that is happening. Progress does take time. And sometimes it's, it feels way slower than we want it to be. But I will give credit where it's due and say that we must appreciate the wins that we do get. And so I feel, I felt really excited being there, seeing two black boys, um, prominent in the production and seeing like, uh, an array of Latinx, um, students, you know, a part of it too. And so it's just like, I'm excited by that. But I will say that tier one instruction, starting at the very bottom, when we talk about literacy, when we talk about math, that is also important. And people act as if it doesn't matter, but that is going to, if we don't pay attention to it on the elementary school level, it will show up in high school. Because those students who are in the AP and honors course level. Because those students who are in the AP and honors course level, they had that good instruction from the beginning and it just continued that if you don't have solid foundation, you don't build upon something solid. And I mean, I do think that as we continue to think more about how we are doing those interventions, how we're supporting those specialists um, on the elementary school level, we will continue to see those trickle down effects later on in their educational journeys and I can I can say that I'm, I've been through that myself. I started my educational journey out at St. Anne's Bell Field and I have to say that I got a good foundation there. I got a good academic foundation. And though it wasn't the best place for me, I felt socially, um, and though I feel like if I didn't come into CCS, I wouldn't have some of the experiences that I did, which I'm so grateful for. I can say that that early start is so important and having those foundational elements um, all in, in a good place. So I will say, um, Ms. Dooley, Ms. Torres, Ms. Burns, Ms. Cooper have all said good things about that. And they're focused on that. And I think it's important for us to think more about that because we always talk about SOL scores or we talk about, oh, our students are so low in comparison to other schools across the state, but we have to think like about what that means on an everyday basis, like what that means in the classroom.
Good stuff. Was that, we are up against an hour. Let's take a quick break if you don't mind. And when we come back, when we close out, we, we can have some final questions and make sure there's nothing we missed in regards of, you know, um, like your key issues starting, starting off with the school board. All right. Stay tuned, y'all. And you know, take a bio break, tell a friend, tell a friend. We'll be right back with none other than newly elected youngest ever school board representative for City of Charlottesville, Ms. Ayanna Bryant. Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Back like we never left I M H O Talk Show. Tell a friend, tell a friend. If you had already, because we are joined by the youngest in charge. And um, we're gonna let Razor kick off this, uh, this net, this final segment, which is, he got something for you.
Hello. Got a question for you. You know, um, I saw something recently about the SOL scores and it bothered me because the ranking of how many schools it was and where Charlottesville ranked as according to black students with success was at the bottom, right? While everybody's first notion is to say how you're disappointed in it, right? I started thinking about the community and I wondered for the literacy rate to be so low for our students in the ranking. I'm wondering, does that go over to the parents? Like how many of these illiterate kids have illiterate parents?
Right. Um, that's interesting. When we were talking at our candidate forum, that was front of mind for me. I think that, this is not a cop out for the schools before I even start my comments, so I just want y'all to know that. But I want to start by saying that SOL scores do not tell the full story of our division. And so I want people to understand that there are some kids who are just not good test takers. Some students are just not strong test takers and that doesn't mean that they aren't learning in school. So I just want to be clear about that. I think also the standardized tests are a real problem. They really are. And I mean, yes, we need to have a way to measure, um, what's happening in the schools and we need to be able to hold schools accountable, absolutely. And I do think that standardized tests have been proven over and over and over again to not be good indicators of all of those things. So, um, I think that has to, we have to start there. But then I will say to the parents, yes, we have to hold our families and our community accountable. Um, I think there should be more um, all hands on deck approach to literacy, similar to how there's all hands on deck approach for athletics and all the other things. We have to put that same energy into school. And I don't say that to blame or bash parents. I say that just to say that I want to come to the table with our families and with our community and I, we have to find a solution. And whether that looks like more summer programming to make sure that students come into the school year with more support. Um, maybe that's where we start, right? But if we could get some of that level of participation that we see at community events on these issues, when it comes to our education, I think we would see a much different um, outcome and we would have a different conversation this time next year. So I'm interested in seeing what that looks like. Um, but no, it is a problem. We cannot, I, I would never deny that the achievement gap is not a problem, but I, like I said earlier in this interview, like the achievement gap has been a problem since I was in elementary school. We were talking about these same exact things. And so I think that's why it's almost like baffling or just like confusing to a lot of people because we're wondering why cannot, why are we not able to find solutions to be able to address the achievement gap. And I will say that this is a problem that is plaguing every single state. Like, you know, like this is a nationwide problem where literacy is a problem. Where technology is taking over, where students are not as engaged in their learning, where parents are having to work more and maybe they're not able to be as active with homework time and reading before bed and things of that nature. I mean, there are a lot of things that are happening on the federal level that are trickling down and affecting families in their everyday life. So I think it's important to think about all of those things. It's a complex, complicated issue. Um, but it will take a multifaceted approach. And I think that there are people on the board now, maybe not when I was in school, that were like as focused on the achievement gap. But I do feel like there are people who do care about it. And I look forward to asking some of those questions when I'm on the board and I have access to more information and you know, I'm able to have a different perspective.
These, this is the only, like not pushback, but I don't know if you're old enough to remember something called Ebonics. That when there were people who made a very similar assessment that you just said, and so Ebonics was birthed. And the problem I have with it with hindsight is that we're celebrated for, you know, if we run around rapping, cussing, calling women out their name, like any type of thing, right? And that carries over to our education, the way that the kids talk in school. I see it when I go pick up my kids. And when we decide that, okay, these tests are biased and white racist and, you know, all the different things. And then we ask our kids to not accept them, but then go out into the real world and ask for jobs and can't fill out applications and can't perform well in an interview, it's kind of confusing. As, and I think part of the problem why we were such great creators for America's history and not so much anymore besides the Dougie and the line dancing and everything else is because our family dynamic is messed up. Like we have more children that I believe in my humble opinion, that the majority of these children that are failing come from single parent households that don't have the dynamic where mom can be the nurturer and not have to be everything. And then dad is being portrayed in society as a deadbeat, just because him and mom may not have worked out. And then the kids aren't allowed to express themselves without being labeled as having a problem, being put on Ritalin and ADHD medicine and have been depressed and it's just so many things that go into being a black child that affects us in different ways that we're not always able to speak about because, and I say this in the most humble way to all my people that don't look like me. I should be able to say that I don't like something without a white teacher telling me that I need some counseling. I need to come talk to somebody or I need to, somebody needs to come to your house and, and sit with you and all these other things, right? So y'all have an impossible job to me to try to make the education gap decrease when society is saying it's okay for you to cuss as long as you put on a rap song. It's okay for you to be athletic but be dumb as a brick or like they told LeBron, shut up and dribble. I mean, that's a real thing, right? And the same children that everybody wants to help wants to chastise them, wants to turn eighteen and send them to the prison pipeline. So that's just my take. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I think you brought up a lot of big things. Um, all of these things again are on my mind as we think about how we are handling students because students are so, I mean, they have lives too. They're not just, you know, they, they have social things that are going on in the background before they get to school. They have home situations. And so it is so important to lead with care. I think number one, like having that care perspective is how you resource students and support them and let them know that school is a safe space and that they have genuine support. When students feel supported, they do better. I mean, when they feel like there's someone in the building who they can go to in a, in a moment of crisis or just like a bad day like that, that means a lot. And I don't think we talk about that enough. So having good support staff that is trained to handle all of these things is key. They can't, again, be the one solution like we talked about earlier, but they can do their best to do their part to help support students. I'll also say that we talk about the school to prison pipeline. I mean, when we talk about SROs and we talk about um, student interaction with police, I think that's also something that should, we should be thinking about. There are just so many, so many complex issues, so many complicated issues that play into the schools. And I mean, your assessment is that school board members have an impossible job. Some people may agree with you. Some people may disagree and say, well, they can do more to address the achievement gap. And I think that we should be hearing all of those perspectives and trying our best to find solutions that work for all students. Um, but yes, black students in particular, as you, your question was about the scores of black students being at the bottom. I do think that it's important to note that from last year, our SOL scores did actually go up. It was a, a decent increase. It wasn't the biggest jump, right? But also, let's also think about the fact that um, the state education, um, the state board of education, um, there are like, they changed the goalpost, like there are, there are, you know, the, right. So the lines change, the kind of um, threshold changes. Um, and so it has changed this past, from this past school year to now. So if that did not happen, I think that increase in scores of students who are passing those SOL scores would actually be a little bit bigger. It would look differently. So it's reflected differently each year, each time they change the goalposts. Um, I do, I will continue to say that I think we need to have an all hands on deck approach to supporting families so that they can support their students. And I'm hopeful with the new grant that I mentioned earlier that Charlottesville City Schools just got um, for community schools. I'm hopeful, um, with the work that United Way is doing, um, City of Promise, all of the abundant life. There are so many organizations who are working to try to do things outside of school to support students. And I just hope that we lean into that more. Um, that the board leans into it more and that the community, um, puts their, their money where their mouth is, their time where their mouth is and shows up to volunteer to be an active participant and partner with the school division on these issues.
I was just gonna say, it was very interesting about that though is that, and, and, and please understand where, where I'm coming from. It's, it's almost like diversity, equity, inclusion can backfire. And, and, and what I mean by that is that, because something that I even heard Razor say out of that is then we go into a society where these partnerships we're talking about, how we as a people in this community need to do more. We, like, we don't have our structure in place. So we're telling our kids to be themselves and we embrace our culture and all that. And we send, and we're going into a world that does not accept our culture. Like they expect you to blend in with, with status quo, with, you know, like whatever that may be. So then it makes me think about private school. We've mentioned private school earlier. People go to private schools because they have a structure, like they have a methodology that you agree with. Your kid is going there because they're going to do this. In a public school setting, you, you have to appease everybody. That's what makes it public school. So I think, so even though it may not be impossible Razor, like that's what makes like the test like so great though, right? Right? Because you're trying to bridge all of these gaps of all of these cultures, all these people, all these religions, you know what I mean?
I don't know if it's D I, uh, backfiring. I will say that for every moment of social change that we can point to in our nation's history, there's always a response. When we had integration, we had massive resistance. When we have uh, twenty twenty, the protests, we have black people organizing collectives, mutual aid, we see pushback, we see criminalization of those efforts. We, so if we pay attention to the history of how progress really works, people say that time is circular, history is circular, because for every time we find advancements, we find solutions to issues, the problem then morphs into something different. And so that is why, again, I think the achievement gap issue is so hard. Again, this is not an excuse for why the scores have looked so bad for so long when it comes to standardized testing in black students. But I will say that for every time there's a little bit of progress, we see something, we see another challenge. And so it's important to keep that in mind. So I, I am a full supporter of DEI. I've said that in every space. I will continue to say it because diversity is key. Our schools are already diverse. Charlottesville High School is one of the most diverse high schools in our area. Um, inclusion is key because students need to feel like they're included in the space. Equity, again, is already a stated goal of Charlottesville City Schools. So I believe that all of those things should remain central to the work moving forward.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, um, the, the lens that I see mostly anything as far as I view the world is that of like a, a human centered one. And so I do hear y'all talking about SOL test, standardized test and numbers and this, that and the other. Um, but all I visualize is the human being, the little kid whose life gets decided for him, who ends up on drug shot or in jail, who ends up uh, living a life well below what he can actually accomplish just because of the lack of support, resources, what have you. Um, and so I mentioned that because like Razor, I read a report um, that, um, the city spends um, more dollars per student, budgets, maybe more dollars per student than those in its region, maybe even across the state. And apparently that's still not working because it has not improved the achievement gap. Um, and so I would think that one needs to then kind of look at what other pieces um, are we, do we need to consider in areas are we failing at? And for me, it becomes pretty obvious, details that I have, is that it's the, it's how we are or not creating that safe space, how we are or not filling our schools with teachers and faculty who the students feel like are truly invested in their futures, who truly care about them. Um, and who feel like their, their lives matter to them, right? And it does not seem to me like that is happening. I'm not in school all day, every day. I don't, but from a distance, right? And from reports, it doesn't seem like that part is happening, right? And, and like I said, I've had a few kids in Charlottesville City Schools where I've had some experiences with that. And we need to emphasize that element of success and the impact it has on an individual's life more. Because we, we show up and we ask city council year after year for more dollars, for more resources. But there's some disconnect because these resources are not generating any more success in these students' lives.
And like you said earlier, you said it has to be human centered.
For sure. I do think that there are still some things that have been truthfully just ignored and pushed to the side for a long time. The reason why Charlottesville City Schools is having to continue to ask for more budget um, for the, you know, capital improvement fund or plan is because there's deferred maintenance for years and years. We've had board members who have decided to not focus on the infrastructure of these buildings and, and the things that needed to be repaired. And now we're seeing some really bad issues coming to the surface. So I think you will continue to see um, requests to city council for more funding because our students do deserve better buildings and they do deserve to have um, classroom spaces that are up to date for the, you know, the current moment, um, and modernized and all of those things. Um, so that is a part of the equity work too. We need our schools to be to, to actually be conducive for learning. I will say that to your point though, it feels like there are some things that haven't worked despite the high spending per pupil. And I will say that, um, from my vantage point, um, there should be some questions asked about how resources are being spent and allocated. Um, but I think that that comes from, I think city council can have more accountability for Charlottesville City Schools if there's a closer relationship. But as of now, it feels like I've been to some of those budget work sessions and meetings. Um, it feels like the conversation is pretty much just about the budget. But if there's a closer communication and partnership between city council and school board, which there should be in my opinion, I think we'll see, um, some different strategies around spending and a little bit more transparency or clarity about where we are with that. So I would support that. And I said that before too. I do think that there should be a closer connection with school board and city council, more collaboration there. Um, and even because most of the issues we've mentioned this today are not controlled by the school board. Like, these are issues of resources in the community for families. They, these are issues of like local economics, like the local economy, you know, so that's bigger than the purview of the Charlottesville City School Board, right? So that's why they need to have a closer connection and work closer together on these issues.
Absolutely, absolutely. We are joined by Zaya Bryant. Zaya, the last thing that I have for you as we wrap up is, uh, you mentioned SROs. But we, we didn't really dig into it. And like, so now you're post, uh, campaign. You, you won, you're here. And so like, just to get your takeaway on, on that is very important. And let me, let me sort of, um, preface your answer though, about throwing out maybe the, the most telling thing that I recall hearing from the conversation is the schools, like in specifically, let's look at CHS. It's proven and they have a rate of that police will be called to the school. Like, so just kind of go on this journey with me. Like whether you agree with that or not, uh, but. Yeah. So, so school reps, principals, administrators say, police are being called to the school. So the most, the, the number one, um, support that I hear of why it's not a bad idea is that wouldn't you want a officer to have built a relationship with students versus it looked like police are just storming your school and it'd be a stranger? And so folks say that if officers are gonna be called and gonna be there, then why not have somebody there that students are familiar with? So that stood out to me when, when I heard these conversations. So I'm curious on, on, on your, um, uh, take and opinion now about SROs.
I mean, I take that point into consideration for sure. I definitely heard that as well. Something else that I heard though is that, um, I've advocated for and others in the community have asked the question of what about close proximity, right? There is this conversation about there being a lot of phone calls to the police and that's why they should be in the building. Well, how come if students and if we know the history of Charlottesville Police Department, we know, like, not to say that things haven't changed for the better, they haven't progressed. You know, there, people have different opinions on that, but we know that there's a complicated history with that. We know that racial profiling is a real thing, bigger than Charlottesville. It's, it's national, it's international. Racial profiling is a thing with police in general. So I think that my kind of caution around that is I thought close proximity would be interesting because rather than them being in the halls, what about being on the site of the school, but just not in the building or not in the hallways? That's something that I thought about. Um, and other people have asked those questions at the SRO info hours. So I would have been interested to hear that taken into account. Let's keep in mind that in the beginning, there were four, there was funding for four full-time positions. The budget was going to be like eight hundred thousand dollars and that has since decreased to two full-time positions. And I think that that goes to show that there was not the explanation from the start to justify that expenditure for that. And I, I just, I mean, if we're talking about spending per pupil and we're talking about budget and we're talking about city resources, let's have those conversations too. And then I would just say, um, students have voiced, the student rep who speaks during the school board, uh, meetings and is like our, you know, speaks for the student body, made a comment at one of the last school board meetings, I don't know if it was the most recent or the one before, that students are concerned about the officers having guns in the hallways in the school. That is a real concern. And if I have, um, wanted to push anything, it's been student voice to the forefront. And so I feel like that should be heard. And I think, I do think school board members are hearing it and I hope that that is reflected in the process that this MOU working group is thinking about, um, as they try to craft the MOU. The reality is that it has been voted on. The MOU process is moving forward. I look forward to being a part of that process and learning more and leaning in and asking the questions. But also I want to say that, um, SROs is an interesting topic, but unfortunately it became the main focus for this entire election of the school board. And it's not, that's not the only issue, but it does, but it does matter. And, you know, the, the school to prison pipeline matters, the achievement gap matters. And so how students are even flowing in the hallways, all of those things are deeper than just what we see on the surface.
Where you, where folks can come, hear from you or, or give feedback, like, you know, you tell the folks how to reach you.
Well, I come onto the board in January. So, uh, there won't be any public hearings or anything like that until after January. But, um, I'm always accessible, happy to be in conversation with folks. I feel like I get emails all the time. So apparently people know how to find me. But my campaign website is still up and contact info is on there. So if anyone wants to learn more about my positions, my priorities that we didn't have the chance to get to today, um, you can find them at, um, zionnabryantforccs.com. Um, and reach out, there's contact info on there. I'd love to be, um, having these conversations.
Let me just manifest something real quick. So Kamala Harris runs for the presidential election again and she wins. And then she hires Zionna Bryant to serve on her administration. Let me just put that out there in the atmosphere. She called you, right?
Yeah, all we can do is hope. Yes. Um, so, um, she did call me last week. I was at CHS for the food pantry to drop off some items there. Um, and I got a no caller ID call and it was like three something on a Tuesday. So I'm like, who's calling me at this time? Um, and so I answered it and I was like, hello? And they were like, is this Zionna Bryant? And I was like, well, yes, it is. Um, and then I was like, who is this? And I couldn't hear, you know, technology. I was trying to connect to my car and stuff. And then I didn't hear it. So she said Kamala Harris and I said, who? And she said Kamala Harris and I said, oh, and then it started to click. And I was like, oh, this is the Kamala Harris. So, you know, I'm definitely grateful that she's paying attention to a school board race in Charlottesville, Virginia. I mean, but also Charlottesville is a big deal. Charlottesville has a lot of great things that are going on, um, and a lot of good work. And people are paying attention to that. So that encourages me and makes me hopeful for the future. And also just that like every vote matters, every vote counts from your top of the ballot races, your gubernatorial elections and things of that nature, all the way down to your school board races. Um, it matters to have people run for office who have good ideas and who want to make change. And I'm just grateful that she is even paying attention to that and took the time out of her busy schedule, because she's like on a book tour right now, to call me and to congratulate me and just even to like, talk to me about a few things, like why was I running or how does it feel? Like, it was a very personal conversation and that was like, that blew my mind too, because it wasn't just like, congrats, hang up. It was, she was interested in hearing about what I had going on. I was telling her that that evening I was going to the 100 Black Men of Central Virginia's meeting. And she was like, so at the end of the call, she's like, oh, be on time to your meeting. And I was like, yeah, just making a stop and on my way there. Like, it felt like she cared and that she continues to care. And, you know, I'm just, I pray that she continues to do her thing and that we continue to benefit from all of the things that she's done. Madam Vice President, um, is, I don't think she's done. I don't, I don't know what, what's next for her. But I do know that her time as a vice president really inspired a lot of young people. And that is why I think we're seeing such a diverse crowd of young people running for office all across the country. So that's encouraging, inspiring, and I look forward to doing my part here on the local level.
Yeah.
And you was like, quit playing. This is, this is a telemarketer.
I know. I was like, no caller ID. Yeah, so.
But did she, but did she remind you that these MFers are crazy? Did she remind you that? Because she, because the world need to remember that these MFers, just like she said.
She said, there's some good things going on and some bad things going on. Those were her words.
And I agree. All right, Ms. Zionna, thank you. Thank you as always. And you know, we know we can get to everything in, in one setting. But it just gives us reason to keep inviting you back. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.